All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, April 13th Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll start with Roll Paul on the left. Carla DeStardis.
Roz Chivik.
Ryan Bray.
Mary Ann Chanati.
Sonia Chapman.
All right, so I'm going to appoint Jared for Lindsey. And we have public hearing. Item A Z 2021-2012 of Dustin and Carrie Everson requesting special permit for construction of a detached 60 by 40 garage on property located at 44 Valley View Road, Musup, map 35, block 118, lot 8A, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
My name is Tussi Everson.
If you could just stand up and tell us briefly what it is you're looking to do.
Um, well, the plans are pretty self-explanatory, 60 by 40 three-bay garage. Um, adjacent to my existing house. Same, pretty much, that's all there is.
So this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who has a comment or a question about this application, this is your opportunity. Okay, any comments or questions from board members? Any comments from staff?
Uh, this is pretty straightforward. It is just a detached garage, it's a large detached garage, but it is a country-style, um, barn-style garage. Fits over the area, there are no neighbors in the area that can see it, so I don't see any problems with it.
Okay. Um, so last call for public comment on this public hearing. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing. Motion by John, second by Sean, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on, um, call to order the regular meeting. Uh, we do have additions to the agenda. Under new business, item B Z 2021-2044 of Edgewater Construction requesting site plan approval for three contractor buildings on lot 12 of the industrial park, Center Parkway and East Parkway. Item C Z 2021-2045 of Edgewater Construction requesting site plan approval for a 15,000-square-foot building on lot 7 of the industrial park, East Parkway. Item D Z 2021-2048 of K A and G Development requesting a two-lot re-subdivision of lot 6 Sterling Hill Road, Assessors map 23, block 58, lot 6. So if I could have a motion to add that under the, uh, new business, the little... Motion by Roz, second by Sean, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, entered under new business. Citizen participation, this is opportunity to address the commission if you have a comment for us this evening. Hearing none, moving on to unfinished old business. Item A Z 2020-1932 continuation of D V J Bumso requesting site plan review for addition to building to accommodate convenience store sales in addition to pizza restaurant on property located at 66 War Regan Road, War Regan, map 1W, block 133C, lot 67, RA 19 zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
I don't believe anybody is here.
Okay. Um, did we have unaddressed comments from staff or engineer?
All of the comments have been addressed.
Okay. Did applicant call to say why he didn't speak here or represent?
I haven't not heard from him.
So, board members, I leave this up to you, since the applicant's not here to answer any questions that you may have. It might be prudent to continue to the next meeting if we can't discuss the application with applicant or representative. But I leave it up to you.
I concur.
Yeah.
I would make that point.
Okay, so I have a motion from John to continue the application. Second. Second by Roz, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is continued to next month. Item B Z 2021-1963 continuation of Northeast Real Estate requesting site plan approval for contractor buildings, 11,840 square feet and 2,400 square feet at 135 141 Ward Ave., Musup, Assessors map 2M, block 94C, lot 11. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
Yes, we're gonna, we still have some unfinished business with that, Greg Log from putting the engineering, so, uh, we're waiting for some staff review for the engineering department. So we're going to ask that we just continue this to next month.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Sean to continue, I have a second by John, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is continued to next month. Item C Z 2021-1964 continuation of Northeast Real Estate requesting site plan approval of 33 60-square-foot addition to truck repair facility located at 108 114 Commercial Drive, Plainfield, Assessors map 5, block 4, lot 41C. Speaking for the applicant.
Yep, again Greg Log from killing the engineering, uh, we're waiting for some input on, from the applicant on this one in response to some of the engineer's comments, so again we're going to ask for this to be tabled for the next month.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. The move. Motion by Roz, second by Sean, all in favor of continuing? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is continued. Item D Z 2021-1965 continuation of affordable lock-in stock requesting site plan approval to construct storage units at 97 Ward Ave., Musup, Assessors map 2M, block 94C, lot 6. And speaking for the applicant.
Good evening, uh, again the record Greg Log from killing the engineering associates. Uh, I did have a new set of plans to distribute, uh, these are revised through to 4/12/2021. So this is, uh, an existing mini-storage facility, affordable lock-in stock located at 94 Ward Avenue in the Musup section of town. Um, there are three existing buildings on the property that are close to the road, uh, two back ones are already approved, uh, mini-storage units, uh, and they have a pavement millings all around them. The plan is to proceed a little further to the west, uh, with two new buildings, uh, that are over here, we would disconnect the fences currently around the existing facility. Uh, and we're proposing two buildings, uh, the larger building that you see is 2,800 square feet and that would house 33 units. The smaller building is 1,050 square feet and that would have 14 units. We would continue using the, uh, same, uh, pavement millings around that to provide a, a, a wearing service for traffic. We would also be keeping them 24 feet apart, which is a part of deregulations for such buildings. Um, there are a couple things, existing lines, this property here is kind of grass area, part of the old command, uh, facilities, uh, there's, there's an existing fence screening or existing fence up against the residential houses on Ward Avenue. There are a few trees, but all of those trees that are there now are on the other side of the fence, uh, I think there's only one way down the corner here that's actually on our property. Uh, other than that, the rest of this is just an open lawn, kind of dipping down. There are a couple of drainage concerns here, and when I mean that, there are an existing four-by-five concrete box culvert that bisects the property that goes through, but this is a, an old, uh, box culvert, it actually picks up some of the drainage in Route 14 and actually some of the drainage up in Musup. Uh, we've talked to the state DOT about this, um, they don't claim ownership of it, uh, my recor, my historic records that I see, looking at old satellite photos and stuff, I'm seeing that this used to be just a ditch, uh, that at some point was filled in by the older mills out here on the site. There's another 18-inch RCP that goes between the houses, uh, and we weren't even aware this was here until we kind of got into the research a little bit more on it, because this pipe is completely buried, used to outlet onto our property. Again, we're speculating that that pipe was buried by previous, uh, mill occupied, uh, you know, occupying the property and ties into that culvert, uh, you know, we will have to kind of see that as we're going into it, but our plan, again, we talked to the DOT, they don't want anything to do with the maintenance after it leaves what is, what used to be the end of the, of the pipe, which used to be on the other property, so at some point this was filled in. Uh, we're going to be intercepting it with a manhole and kind of going around and burning it around, so we're not putting it under the foundation. Uh, we've also put notes on here that the applicant or the owner of the property will be the one responsible for the maintenance of these pipes as they were put underground, it's on their property now, it's something they kind of inherited purchasing of the property, so, uh, in regards to the engineer's comments, uh, we have to put a maintenance note about that and repair. Drainage, what we're trying to do is, this is obviously a, a, a wearing service, we're calling for like, put this concrete curving along the west and the south end of things here, so that we can control water, we propose two catch bases, catch basin number one and number two at the very west edge of the property, uh, and those will take the water and put them into, I think we've got five or six storm seaters there. Uh, our engineer, Norman Tebow, has gone through all the calculations with the town's review engineers, and I think everything is satisfactory at this point. Uh, the soil conditions are a little poor, so we're, we're doing what treatment we can do with the water, uh, and then there's overflow that we're just tied back into the existing culvert system, but we're making every attempt that we can to treat that storm water from the roof and from the paving areas. Uh, as far as, we'll be proposing a, we'll be proposing the fencing all around the property. Uh, again, the only trees that are going to be removed are kind of right in this area here where we break through the existing fence into the, uh, existing facility, there'll be trees removed there. We are calling for, there's an existing fence here, it's in good shape, uh, chamber fence, we're going to add privacy slats, uh, we have a detailed showing of that, uh, to that whole existing fence up along those residential properties. We are also adding a double row of trees to be planted along here to provide additional screening and buffering from that neighbor, neighboring property, uh, so that's how we're handling that. The other thing we do have is we do have lights that will be placed on the building and we did de-keep off the lighting that would be in LED, uh, wall pack on the unit when it would be a full cut-off, so none of the lens will be exposed to the side or to the, uh, or up or anything like that, this will be just downward light, just really for safety or anybody that may be there during, uh, the months when it gets darker a little bit earlier. So, uh, we did try to take that into consideration for this. I believe there was a round of comments and a letter came through from the engineering department, uh, maybe Ryan can weigh in on that, but I think everything kind of stayed met that they were looking for from us, and really that's kind of what we're looking to do on this site, and I'll, I'll turn it over to the commission if you have any questions for me.
To the commission, um, I believe all the comments have been addressed, our town engineer has arrived. Chuck, if you'd like to address, uh, the lock-in stock application?
Sure. Madam Chair, if you want me to go through all the comments, if you have some specific questions?
If you could just give the, like, an overview summary of what we found and what they came into compliance with, so that, if there's any outstanding issues.
Sure. So, uh, so there are no outstanding issues that we have at this point. Um, the drainage was, as Ryan explained, is pretty tricky on-site, there you have DOT drainage coming into the site, uh, you have that existing box culvert which, uh, then drains, is connected to a 36-inch pipe, so 36-inch pipe is obviously much smaller than a four-by-five box culvert, um, so that's not something that the, the town would have done or that the town necessarily condones. Um, so that was, that's one of the reasons that, uh, we had asked the engineer, the design engineer, to have the owner of the property be responsible for that drainage pipe, um, because of the diminished capacity that would be, uh, that would happen there between, if we went from a larger culvert to a smaller one. The, the water quality is going to be handled through the infiltration chambers, uh, and this will also allow a little bit of a disconnect between the impervious area of the storage facility, uh, before it drains to the river. We're all set with all the DOT easements, um, and they, they updated their operation and maintenance plan, uh, based on the, the, what's proposed for drainage, um, and that really is kind of the main points of the comments.
Okay, thank you.
You guys have any questions?
Any questions for the applicant, engineer, or staff on this application?
Any questions for the director? On this, uh, box culvert, did you look at, did you, do you know what the area that you were getting to that is?
No, we didn't go and trace it all down, it's, I know it catches to several catch basins right on Ward Avenue, and historically I've been told that it catches more going up, uh, I believe it's Allen Street up in that area, the area it goes up towards. From what I can see on the state, uh, they're very limited with the map for Ward Avenue, uh, but they show it going up that way a little bit too. Uh, I do know that it is a four-by-five stone culvert, I've looked at it, it's pretty, pretty neat, it's, it's in good shape. I think right at the property line, it does downsize to, it used to discharge there, if you recall, and I believe the applicant of the property next door, we had gotten approvals to extend that culvert, but it was supposed to be a 48-inch, but now I'm seeing what's actually done to the field is a little bit smaller, as, uh, the engineer points out, it is a 36-inch, so they downsized it there for whatever reason. It appears to be functioning, I know it's been in for, uh, three or four years, and I guess we'll have to watch it, and perhaps, I know we had an application before, on the very next property, it would be a similar thing, that we'll probably have a similar note asking for that maintenance to be bought, uh, uh, you know, for each real estate, I'll see when we come back with that on the next month.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it keep flows from coming down that box culvert and be handled by the 36?
By the 36, yeah, all I know is that it has been in place for, I believe, three to four years. Um, it, it seems to be handling it, I know last year was a dry year to, to really see anything, but, uh, prior to that, it seems, it seems to be handling it.
Okay, any other questions for applicant, engineer, or staff?
One thing that we are waiting for though is a certification that the town's flood controller has been complied with, and I did speak to Norm about that. Norm stated that yes, everything is in compliance, I just need to get that in writing.
And we could, we could add a note to the plan and say that.
Sure.
I believe we're, we're well outside of what we're running on this, on this property.
And would that be something we would add as a condition?
Yes.
Just a question to the maintenance, not would that be a condition also?
Uh, the maintenance, we've already added a note to the plan for the maintenance of the pipes, so there is a, a, kind of a bulleted note right below, two existing buildings, so we did, we did address that.
Any other questions? So staff did have our recommended conditions for approval, the fence on the north side shall be equipped with privacy slats to screen the residences, MyLars are to be submitted for permission signature and then recorded in the town clerk's office, engineering fees to be determined are to be paid within 30 days of approval or prior to recording the MyLars, whichever comes first, and then certification is needed that the town's flood control ordinance has been complied with. So if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, as read.
I'll second. So I have a motion to approve with conditions as read by Sean, a second by Roz, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is approved.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We don't see anybody lying here.
Item E Z 2021-1979 continuation of Carl Kemp requesting site plan approval for storage buildings on property located at 144 146 Norwich Road, Central Village, map 15, lot 72, lot 4, Commercial zoning district. Do we have anyone to speak for the applicant?
Actually, I guess, uh, credit's engineering, uh, needs a little more time to address.
Okay, so, we would have a motion to continue in that case? I have a motion by Sean and second by John, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Application is continued to our next month's meeting.
Mr. Carla, I'll just a second for a second, so I see Mr. Manziel has a, uh...
Yep, we'll go back to that once we finish the rest of old business, I'll ask the commission. Item F Z 2021-2012 of Dustin and Carrie Everson requesting special permit for construction of a detached 60 by 40 garage on property located at 44 Valley View Road, Musup, map 35, block 118, lot AA, 8A, RA 60 zoning district. Any items for discussion on this application? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Roz to approve, second by John, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Any abstentions? Application is approved. All right. So E 2021-1932 is now in the building, do we need to rescind the motion to continue to next month?
Um, yeah, rescind it and then...
Okay. You're, who made that motion, Sonny, they would have to be the one to rescind.
John and Roz.
Okay. John, would you move to rescind that? Thank you. 1932, John. And do I have a second? Second by Jared, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so going back to item A Z 2020-1932 continuation of the D V J Bumso requesting site plan review for addition to building to accommodate convenience store sales in addition to pizza restaurant on property located at 66 War Regan Road, War Regan, map 1W, block 133C, lot 67, RA 19 zoning district, and if the applicant could come on up, please?
We mark all of that, you should be requested on the next last week.
Could you speak a little louder?
We marked everything on the last, the last minute.
Did you have any outstanding issues, Ryan?
Uh, all issues have now been addressed, uh, the parking has been cleared up, the, uh, drainage has been cleared up, so I have nothing more common on it, I don't believe Chuck has either.
Do you concur that all outstanding issues have been addressed?
Uh, there were, there were just a couple of issues for the record, so I can leave mine in here. Um, Ryan, do you, do you recall there was, uh, on the plan, I think they had one infiltration chamber filled, and there was actually several, or two maybe?
Um, they did, they did, one of the 16-foot, uh, infiltrator, so they enlarged it.
Okay, so that would be two then? I just, I don't remember. I can't remember, we went through that.
Okay, so two of the first.
Okay. And... And then they were going to do something with the, having an overflow system?
Yep, there is an overflow, um, where did it go on? I did see it on there.
Is it with a gutter or something?
Yeah, I know I saw.
Yep, okay. So our, our comments are addressed, um, thank you.
All right, thank you. So staff did know following conditions if we determined to approve, Mylar to be submitted for permission signature then reported in the clerk's office, engineering fees to be determined, paid within 30 days or prior to filing Mylar, whichever comes first. Were there any additional outstanding questions from board members?
Is there a fencing between this commercial property and residential property?
There is, all aware of it. Yes, it is proposed.
Is there a detail or a note on that?
The sheath stockade fence, but says, unless they practice it correctly. The stockade fence is shown as aligned with circles along the front, um, to the...
Is it only tappy to have in port property?
Okay, what? What's I, what's the coordinates?
This side? So, no, this side right here, this side over here, this is elevated, and this is the garage with no house, the house is actually across the street.
Okay.
Do you have a question, John?
No, it's, that's the, uh, this is the one on the home, the, the application, you see them in the lot, I mean...
Yep.
It means everybody's requirements have many years out there, but only yourself is part of the body, I would make a motion to approve.
Uh, with the conditions as read? Okay, so I have a motion to approve with conditions as read from John, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Jared, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, application is approved with those conditions. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Item A Z 2021-2028 of Western Express requesting special permit for truck terminal on property located at 1293 Norwich Road, Plainfield, map 5, block 4C, lots 13 and 13A, Industrial One zoning district, and this requires a public hearing as it is a special permit. I have a motion by Sean, scheduled public hearing, a second by Roz, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is scheduled our next meeting in May. Item B Z 2021-2044 of Edgewater Construction requesting site plan approval for three contractor buildings on lot 12 of the industrial park, Center Parkway and East Parkway. Is there anyone to speak for the applicant?
This is before the weapons commission, uh, they won't be acted on until, um, this month's meeting, so it will have to be paid to this motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to continue to the next month? Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Sean, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Continued to next meeting. Item C Z 2021-2045 of Edgewater Construction requesting site plan approval for a 15,000-square-foot building on lot 7 of the industrial park, East Parkway.
As with the prior ones, it's also for the execution.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to continue. Motion by Sean, second by Roz, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Continued to next month, month. Item D Z 2021-2048 of K A and G Development requesting a two-lot re-subdivision of lot 6 Sterling Hill Road, Assessors map 23, block 58, lot 6.
So this is a re-subdivision of, um, Sterling Hill subdivision that was approved a few months back, uh...
months back, back in November, I believe. We have it on the 10th and they are re, looking to re-subdivide what is now lot 6. This does require a public hearing as it is a re subdivision.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I have a motion by Sean. Second by John. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, scheduled public hearing at our next meeting. Review and act on the minutes from March 9th. I was absent, so I'll be abstaining, so if you have any changes or adjustments.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Sean, second by Roz. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And I'm abstaining. Any other extensions?
I'm abstaining.
Jared is abstaining as well. All right, meeting minutes are accepted with two abstentions. Any correspondence?
We have one item and this is from Ballpoints Technology Corporation. They deal with the two T-Mobile antennas around the, the smokestack next door and they're just looking to replace the antennas.
Okay. The correspondence that I can email to members, notification from the CFPBA that Chairman Disjardine has been selected for 12-year length of service award. And also I can email a list of pending legislation that's relative to planning and zoning commission.
All right, thank you. Any items for other?
I have none.
Okay, report from zoning enforcement.
35 Swallow Road, the issue would be chickens. They have all sets that have been moved and the cage is in our lawn, so that, that violation is closed. I'm sorry, what's the violation? We're working with them. 14 Canterbury Road, junk vehicles on property, cease and desist was sent April 1st and they have 30 days for compliance, which began April 2nd. 32 44 Norwich Road, this is the shed place, the old Jusity savings. A new cease and desist was sent out April 6th and they have 30 days to comply. There's also a cease and desist delivered to the tenant because the property owner and the tenant, two different people, and that was delivered by state marshal on April 7th. So 30 days to comply. 39 Lilliver Road, I'm not sure vehicles and parts, that still need a cease and desist. 21 King Downing Road, Mackin property, construction equipment on the property, a new cease and desist was sent out April 5th, full compliance within 30 days of April 8th. 13 Simmons Ave., Davrisco, one vehicle junkyard, new cease and desist sent out April 1st and 30 days to comply, for compliance from April 5th. 2 South Pine Street, that is the tractor trailers, residential property. Have not seen any vehicles on the property in the past couple of weeks, so I think they're beautiful. Lot 14A, High Street, Charlie Corson, this is the garage that was being converted to a house. He never did obtain permits to, to complete the house, but he has passed away and there's no violation if it doesn't become a house. I'm, I'm sorry. He, he received a variance for setbacks, which is required to turn the garage into a house. He had not obtained the permits to, to convert it over. As long as it, his construction does not continue, there is no violation, so I'm looking to move this from the report. All they have to do is obtain permits if they want to continue with the converting. 0 Norwich Road and Route Road, these are the fields. They were excavating gravel, permits, notice of violation was sent out, work has stopped. American Industries is repairing a plan right now to apply for the earth excavation permit. That should be in the next month or so. 200 Stark for the road, this is a shed that was being converted to living space, apartment, and work has stopped, my knowledge, and as long as it do not continue, it will not be a violation. So I'll just monitor it and move, move forward for help. That's it.
All right. Our report from planning and zoning department.
Nothing in addition to my regular report I was providing.
All right. So it looks like our only item remaining is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion to adjourn by Sean. I am second by John. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good to see you.